These are our force works in progress as our consulting plan stated. A fire will not be completed for a number of years and we are slated targeting 2015, correct? And a report on that is all this.
Do you want to have any questions?
On that street made this one, MNS Engineering did all the studies on the, on that, correct?
Pretty much they prioritize, they reviewed what was currently in place. Review it, made some alterations, but it's specifically taken with master plan.
How do they come up with the priority of the streets?
There is a category, a scoring system that they use and stated in our master plan. We can pull it up if we need to on the, on our.
Is it a unregulation of city staff or was it just their, their study?
Yeah, they reviewed what was in place and then they actually went out and go around and, and sort of sampled of the streets to see what kind of consistency was in there, what kind of materials and how they have deteriorated throughout the years and then.
We had a, we had a chart of the priority of all the streets, is that still the same?
It changed somewhat, but it's pretty much the same on that.
Did they take into consideration any of the water line sewer lines that are currently?
No.
So what would, what would currently be in place is the lane of asphalt.
Yes.
Do you think that, that the sewer and water should be done concurrently with, with that line?
The ideal, yes. Of course, you have the whole street and then that's what it is done.
Rather than them spinning the lane just to resurface it and having to go back in and make the repairs and.
Yes, sir, that is correct. Prior to us getting here today, any of the, the maintenance or resurfacing of streets were done with the knowledge of city staff? Yes, those lines were replaced with soft second was one of the ones I think that there had been. The majority of it replaced, but not all of it. And that's what we've come up across is they had to break up a perfectly good street. Other ones on G Street, those lines were replaced and then the road was rebuilt.
Cause we, I guess on some of those that are coming up are sort of the, some of the large streets, some of the small streets, right there out though, what, what street is that off of Sixth Street?
Trail, is it Trail, Trail Road?
That, 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 I think it's Trail Road.
Yes.
That one's, that one's going to be resurfaced? I don't think there's any sewer.
One of the things that, that we haven't done and it, it has to come back to the council. We're moving in this process, but that's one of the things that we've been holding off on to see what direction to pull. So we haven't paved any of these streets, we haven't rebuilt any of these streets. What we're doing is just making.
Do you think it'd be best to wait till Mr. Hammer's report comes in in order to, to see if we need to upgrade some of, upgrade some of those sort of lines, water lines before we start resurfacing as well?
Yes, right.
Okay.
Thank you very much for being present.
Okay, now we're going to go on. Item four E regarding the appointment of registered agent in corporations of the city of Florisville, councilor, please.
This was an item that also came up at the last city council meeting was the appointment of a registered agent for the corporations of the city. They included the four A, the four B, and correct me if I'm wrong, Councilor of the Parks Foundation.
Correct.
Okay. Each of the organizations shall have a, one, but by charter or by law, they're supposed to be independent organizations. And although their boards are appointed by the council, they function independently of the council. The city manager in his job description is the liaison between these corporations and the city council. From what I understand, the process of appointing a registered agent is a simple form that is filed with the state. And the registered agent is essentially the person who legal notices are served to regarding that corporation. With the four B corporation, we have an executive director that's a full-time person there. With the other boards, we have the board members. It had been practiced in the past for the city manager to be appointed as the registered I believe that these boards or their executive directors should be serving as the registered agent. And that this is a simple form change. If boards change, if executive directors change, it's a simple filing. I asked Mr. Rosenberg to give us a list of their responsibilities as well as any liabilities that they may have as the registered agent. Certainly that would be a concern if we asked somebody to take on that legal responsibility. And unless they're negligent, they have no real liabilities if you read through his memorandum there. I'd like the council to request of these corporations to remove the city manager from the registered agent role of those corporations and select within them, either within their board themselves or their executive directors to serve as a registered agent and allow the city manager to serve as the liaison back to the council from those. Counselor, you wanted to say something about the lack of, and I know you stood up before I started talking.
Can I say something for you? Would these board chairmen and board members have a say to whether they want to be a registered agent or do you prefer to say a president?
Well, I, I think we're recommending that they make that appointment themselves. And if they disagree with that, then they can come back to the council and say, we disagree and this is why. I'm simple, I'm not asking the council to direct who is appointed. I'm asking the council for these boards to go back, look at that responsibility and if it is most appropriate, appoint somebody within that organization or come back to the council with another recommendation.
What's wrong with the city manager becoming the registered agent? I mean, if I'm mistaken, I mean, a bunch of the, I mean, it's not typical that the, that the city manager is the registered agent.
When we were in executive session the last time, some of the points got brought up and I think we can bring them back up as to what happened that raised this issue. I don't know that we can discuss it at here, councilor?
Can I just speak to this question, irrespective of executive, and be straight about it? The registered agent is basically your agent for service. If this gentleman here or some process server comes to deliver papers, that's basically what you do. For state agency purposes, you're the person that gets notices from the state agency. There's some state agencies that require that if you're a corporation, you register your controller's office. In some cases requires it, Secretary of State's office requires it for their own purposes. And sometimes it's the controller's office, okay? But generally the agent for service, the practical work is the one that the sheriff goes to serve papers off of, okay? I mean, that's really it. And, and I stood up just to say, out of all that BS and the familiarity I've got from me and the rest of you guys, you're the process person to the process server to serve papers. Okay? The other part that we're not talking about, that I want to mention, is each corporation is required to make a, I think it's called a P4, a report on their status every four years and not less than every four years. And these are really kind of functions that all are put together. And your corporate cell is like their state, who your officer is. And if you don't do that, they're sending a national notice that says if you don't do it, we're going to put you out of business and they pull your charter. Okay? And that can be serious because once you go out of business, then everybody is individually liable for what goes on as a corporate having a corporation of the corporate shield. And I have a defendant in a particular case right now that's gone seven years without posting their P4. And so there's no way that you go back and get reorganized. Each of the directors are individually responsible for my lawsuit. Not that I'll prevail, at least should I prevail, okay? And the only thing I think that Mr. Miller and the rest of you ought to consider, and I would recommend you let each of the entities that we're talking about tonight make their own decision with the recommendations from the council, is if they are responsible for making their P4 annual notices as to who their officers are or who to show, and they're the ones that select their agent for service, they've taken on some major responsibility for being self-sufficient. And you're not having to go wipe their family, you're not having to take care of that, you're expecting them to get the job. And I think that's the essential point that I get out of this whole process is if you want the agency working for you to be picking up their dolls and doing something with them and bringing you recommendations and performance.
Now, can you?
And the only reason I kind of concur with Mr. Miller on this agent for service is that I think they're going to have to decide whether they want that responsibility. The reason I think it's a good idea is that tells you they're ready to take, take up their task and run with it. But I think that should be their decision.
Now, can they still pull the charter even if, even if the individuals from the, say, four A, four B, four C doesn't comply? Can they still pull the charter for their negligence?
I don't think I understand the word comply. I mean, as long as.
Well, I mean, they, they, they have to comply with the rules of, of sending the list to the attorney, to the attorney general or whoever. Yeah, whoever was it that?
Basically, that's the Secretary of State's office who just really wants the report. That's all they're after.
But if they don't, you said that they could pull the charter, correct?
Yeah, it just automatically expires.
Okay, now, if, if that registered agent that is elected on the four A, four B doesn't do that, the city can still have the charter pulled due to their.
I mean, you can, you can pull their appointment, but I hope we're looking at what they're doing more than once over four years and they don't, it doesn't last. And one way we might cure this problem is, is when you're annual reporting or your periodic reporting, just put that on a report to you who the agent for services and when they last updated the Secretary of State. Because every time each one of the organizations organizes their offices, they should be filling out.
So what happens if one entity wants a registered agent and maybe like four B might want and four A doesn't want? What are we going to?
They don't have a choice about having a registered agent. They have to have.
No, but I'm saying they're in their own group.
They keep all standing to the manager.
So we have to have a physical address on?
Isn't that what we're doing?
And they have to have a street address.
And they use this address, correct?
And that's fine, yes.
So if one of those, let's say, like, we've got an interim, you know, even.
He's a responsible person, he knows what to do.
Okay, but if, let's say in four A, there's nobody here in this building.
Bill Blaisen knows what to do.
But he hasn't called her. You know what I'm saying? If, if, if somebody comes with a set of papers and nobody's here, what happens in that case?
You're running home.
Okay, so they can go, okay. That was what I'm saying, they have to go to that address that.
They go there and somebody says, where's Bill Blaisen? Somebody says, look him up in the phone book. If they'll find the process service, they're pretty competitive.
Mr. Tally, do you want to say something?
No, I, I just wanted to add that, you know, the only reason we selected this to four B is just that simply you have turnover in boards. And our thinking was that it just makes sense because you're always going to have someone here at city hall to, to be served.
Especially since you've got an officer.
And, and that was the whole point. But really and truly, in the whole scheme of things, it's really not a huge issue. I think we've got bigger issues to tackle than simply deciding that. But that was our thinking is it made more sense to do that.
That may be true for you, Jason, but there are three of us who are your directors that ate from the Parks Foundation. I've got no clue what you're talking about. I bet Thomas and, and George standing here with me, who's going to school me on responsibilities if I assume those duties for registered agent as the president of the Parks Foundation?
That's what I was asking the question.
And I think the simple answer is, if that's a problem for the Parks Foundation, the city manager is the.
You got it, Andy.
But you also have to make sure you fill out that form because I think forty did it already.
That's probably why we got that fourteen hundred dollar bill.
Okay. Do you want to take any next one or do we get on to anything there?
Well, I think that was, my motion was to, to, you know, ask these, these boards to review that appointment and that form filing and ensure that, you know, if they want to make that appointment internally, great. If they want to make that appointment to the city manager, great. If they have some other questions about it, that we can address that. The real issue was the most recent change in the four B corporation just occurred. You know who was the previous registered agent? Previous city manager. How long have you been city manager or interim city manager?
About three years.
Okay, so the point is this board realizes the importance of that and making the change. When our boards change officers, as our counselor has advised and said, and this four B corporation has changed officers twice, or at least once since I've been in office or since their, their appointment, we need to ensure that that reporting is occurring and that registered agent is doing it, be it the city manager or it be done internally. And I think that's the point of this entire discussion.
Was that your motion?
Motion is such.
I respect it.
Mr. Malick, can you explain, can you re-say the motion for me as you would like it listed? I apologize, there's a lot of discussion.
There it is, that each of the corporations before A, the four B and the Parks Foundation review the reporting requirements. And as counselor has called it, I think a P4 reporting that is who the officers are and who the registered agent of the corporation is. And ensure that they are updated, okay? Whether it be appointment of a registered agent of that board, its executive director or the city manager, but let's review those, that reporting.
And may I make this suggestion? Let's have that copy of that report to the city secretary not later than June fifteenth. So we know it's done.
As he said.
That exactly, but I'll do this, take the board to come. Okay.
Maybe just.
Yeah, motion by Councilman Miller and a second by Councilor in Woodhills, all in favor of this.
All in.
All opposed, motion carries by four. We'll go down to the next one. We're going to go on to item four K, monthly four A corporation update.
Madam Mayor, allow me just one second and I, I know I want to keep this great. As a result of some, some actions that occurred in, legal actions, let's just leave it at that. The intention originally was quarterly reporting by the corporations to the city council. Suddenly this monthly report showed up again. The intention behind this monthly report is to ensure communication between these boards and the council. And the goal in this reporting is that once a month, you can submit a paper report that is included in a council package. And then once a quarter, make an in-person presentation and update to the council. It was not to, to suddenly require these corporations to make lengthy reports to the city council, but to ensure that the council is communicated with the boards. And I suspect after one or two of these reports, we will be at the written report format coming to council and back to the quarterly reports.
You mean we don't want to hear nothing? He's a.
No, ma'am, that's not the, what I was saying. I, I was, Mr. Tally came to me and said, hey, what was this about? And now Ms. Conley came to me and asked me what this was about. I did not have the opportunity to speak to Ms. Conley about this or to everybody who was in attendance. But why do we change from monthly to quarterly? That's the explanation.
It's really brief actually, so it'll be good. We've had two meetings scheduled since the last time we were here. Of course, everyone knows the first one we didn't have a forum. We met on May the twentieth. We had, been working on the event fee schedule, which we are still working on, still waiting on a little bit of input from yourselves. Mr. Blaisen presented that at the last update and we're still putting that together. We have done the research, we've worked on it, we've checked with several other centers and we're still putting it together. I do have corrected copies that I will get to y'all within the next few days. Myself and the attorney has worked on that and there was a per day, per hour issue one, but we had issued you last time and that has been corrected. So I will get that to y'all. We're basically working towards the directive that the council gave us to be able to take over the operational, everything, the operations at the event center. That's what the board's working for. Mr. Blaisen, myself, Paige Bullen and Deborah Conley, we're, we're all, you know, very intuitive. It's a, a big thing to us. It's within our hearts. We want, you know, we want to make this happen. So that is the goal that, that we are working towards at this point. We have worked very close with city staff, Ms. Martinez, we've gone out there, we've looked to see how things operate and what it takes to make it happen. And it's awesome. It's really neat to see something in our city like that going on. The box, you know, as Mr. Burrow said last Friday was amazing. It's awesome to see the Maron's family bring that home. We've got a lot of action, a lot of activities going up at the center. It's busy, lots of bookings. Very excited to say that, as I said this morning, we had five Saturdays open with three pending today, which would leave us two Saturdays for this entire year. So it's happening and we're very proud to say that it is. We, that's what, that's what we're working towards. We're working towards getting everything in order to take over as you have it.
Is the four A board experiencing any challenges or hurdles that this council can help them get through or over?
I, I think we're probably handling it pretty well at this point. We do have a couple of issues with some of the words out about the, the fees going up and we've got some nonprofits coming to us and that kind of thing, saying, you know, how's this going to affect me? How's this going to affect this? And I think that's just something that we'll have to work through as we get all of those fees in place. And of course, we'll bring them back for your final decision. Before I go, I would just like to mention a couple of things that the city has worked on in the past. We did a summer country music series for two years in a row. It was a really good thing. We had it at the center on the patio, some of them we had inside. And I know that spending was cut back in November. And though this item hasn't been rescheduled or planned or anything, but just like to bring that to your attention to see if it's possible that in the future, we might be able to work on something like that. We had, it really started to pick up. The events were getting larger and we've got some really good sponsors who helped us with this. So it wasn't a very big costly thing to the city. So I believe Mr. Burrow and me came to several down in, so there, it was something that we really enjoyed doing, so we could maybe visit about that.
I would consider maybe making them a little later in the evening or afternoon because it's, it's hot. I think you would have more people coming out and it's not so hot.
We, we did have a much better turnout when we did move, I think the last two, it was really hot and we moved them into the center and we had really good turnout, so that also. And on the same note, the fall fest, which is our barbecue cookoff, that should happen around November and so far, nothing has been scheduled whatsoever. Just a couple of things I just wanted to bring up that, you know, if it's comparable, it's something that we would like to work on and we would like to continue to see happen in our city.
Okay, now we're going to go on to item four G, the non-agency corporation update.
Where's the clock?
It's over here.
Mary to downtown?
Just wait till the sun comes up.
Now, first of all, let me just introduce myself. I'm sure you know who I am, Jason Tally. I'm the current treasurer for the Forest League and I'm involved in corporations. I was asked by our president, Andy Banks, to make this presentation tonight, probably which will see from us as a rotation of various folks making that presentation as well as the executive director in the future. What I want to do is go through the list here, but this is from the time we came on board to current. And this just will kind of get you caught up to where we're at. I know you've probably followed a lot of the stories in the newspaper, but this is kind of where we'll start. I will tell you that the board is very impressive in terms of their working skills. They have a lot of knowledge in all areas and they don't fatten hide when you schedule a special meeting just to get something done. And that's at the top there, it shows you since we came in in December two thousand and twelve, we have had eleven meetings. And that does not include the special committee meetings we've had, things like that. This was just simply eleven meetings. And so that's a lot through the May fifteenth date, which was our last meeting. Our officers and directors, of course, consisted of Andy Banks, President, Ray Lampert, Vice President, Mary Golantique and Secretary, myself as treasurer, directors David Stroger, Mike Carey, and then Raymond Ramirez as the interim executive director. So the group has just really gotten along well. We're not afraid to ask questions and challenge each other with issues and we're very conservative in our thinking. Also want to thank Mr. Ramirez for the work that he's done because he's literally poured through all the filing cabinets, weeks and months. And now when we ask him, where's this contract, what have we spent? Even if it goes to Walmart or wherever it was, he can pull those contracts now and find that information. And so the office organization is really in good shape now in terms of finding things. Okay, so when we came on board, of course, we had established terms, which we did that. Our governing bylaws were amended and approved by the city council. Appointed the personnel committee, which consisted of Mary Golantique in his chair, members Mike Carey and Andy Banks. Appointed the finance committee, which consisted of myself, Ray Lampert and David Stroger. Posted job openings of the executive director, who shortly after coming on board, Mr. Paris had resigned. The executive director job description, of course, was developed and approved by our board, of which we did not have one from. So a lot of organizations, you see there in the next bullet points, has occurred simply just making sure that all the invoices that are there are accounted for, attached to checks. That way when you need to pull something, it's really easy to pull and at our fingertips. We've been, I especially have been working on budget type comparison reports and it's taken a while to get some of those details, just simply because we've had to go through and change some entries and the software. And so I'll go over there for a couple hours and then I personally just run out of time because I have a business to run too. And then I'll have to come back. And we're, we're real close to getting a good budget comparison type worksheet that every time we have a meeting, we're saying where we stand in terms of total current expenses to our budget items, okay? And we're, we're really there now. It's just there's a little tweaking that still needs to be done to some of the entries. Approved the purchasing policy. One of my concerns early on was that there was. One of my concerns early on was that there was expenses being paid, but there was no real system in place to be fair and allow competition in those services that were being provided. And so we have approved what I think is probably a pretty strict purchasing policy, which means that the executive director can spend no more than $250 for that board approval. Our board has to approve anything that's going to exceed $250, up to $14,999.99. If we get to $15,000, we're going to do sealed bids. That means that if I have a shredding situation where I'm going to shred properties that are our properties, we're going to find out from three people. We're required to get three quotes. Those quotes will be attached to those invoices and filed, so that we know when we wrote that check to these people for that service, that we have documentation showing that we got the best deal. We should be able to price those services in advance without going to that person or to a person and saying, hey, you did this job, how much per job? We should go for the year what this stuff would cost. So those are some ideas that we've implemented, and we did approve our purchasing policy. Made a determination to sell the beer warehouse. That came up in some discussions as to the properties that we had. Do we want to keep them? Do we want to put them on the market and possibly let private enterprise manage something like that? Completed the two-acre property transaction at the Lone Oak Subdivision that had been pending for some time. We had to call a special meeting to get that done, but we got it done. Worked with Howard Berger, oh, excuse me. Hired Howard Berger, attorney to represent the FPD C in all real estate transactions. Renedogated three pending contracts that the industrial park extensions were signed. We're hopeful to move forward to a close on those three properties. Those three properties were oilfield-type companies that had contracts that were really in the expiration phases in terms of expiring. And we went back and was able to renegotiate those, and it looks like we've been able to close those properties. We also worked with Howard to design a document that would provide a common set of regulations, restrictions, and easement placements for utilities and access at the industrial park. Now, what this comes from is that when this property was sold, there was no consistent restrictions or easements on the property. So now we're having to go negotiate with the property owners to make sure that we can gain some of these easements and so forth. Now, our talks have been that this is probably not going to be an issue, but, you know, nobody ever likes going back after we do that. So Howard put a lot of work into researching the deeds, the boundaries, all those kind of things, and came up with a great document that Mr. Ramirez and Howard Berger will be working with each of the property owners to get in place, okay? And we'll keep you updated on that process. Ramped new service agreements with utility providers to the industrial park. We need to know in these agreements who's servicing what, who's responsible for what, et cetera, et cetera. And that work is still being completed. Received text op approval to commence work at the entrance of Rancho Grande Industrial Park. Thank you, Mr. Heimer, for your work on that, for helping us get that approved. We also engaged Mr. Heimer with very partners in engineering to produce project bid documents for the Rancho Grande entrance and handle the sealed bid process for the project, as well as project oversight. The bid request should be publicized real soon. I know we're right there, I hope that within the week it will be publicized, and then we'll be receiving sealed bids for the completion of that entrance that was approved by text op. Resolved a garnishment judgment that contains an outstanding invoice on the deceleration lane at the Forestville Community Center. I think you've been briefed on that previously. The FPD C offered, and the buyer has verbally accepted the selling price of a lot from the Veterans Park property. The contract should be signed in the next few days. This is a recent thing that's occurred, and so we got a drafted contract today, so I'm hopeful that this person will get that property signed. One thing that we've been very adamant about is that when we sell a property, for many of these properties, that it must sell for fair market value. We're not going to sell properties for under market value, and, you know, we're not in the business to sell something that's not at market value, and that's what we're making sure that we're doing. So what we're trying to do is gradually increase some of those property sales in some of these areas, and we've done this with this recent trade value. Okay, so that's kind of a long list of things. Now, I know this is a simple list on a piece of paper, but it has been a lot of hours doing all these things and meeting with these folks. So the project focused in the next few months. Number one, we need to get an executive director. We need to find someone, of course, with some great experience that can really move our city in the right direction that we need to move. And we have had a good number of applicants that have come in with a lot of great experience. We're hopeful that we can get that done in 60 days. If Mary Calantique would like to add some of that, I'll be glad to let you add anything.
We're diligently working on the matrix to take a look at how we're going to score these applicants and be fair about it and try to come up with the highest qualified individual. So I'm very pleased to say we've had some excellent applicants.
So we're excited about that. Adopted an investment policy at the next regular meeting. Of course, Laura has brought us a sample of what you've adopted and so forth, and so we'll be looking at that being done. Of course, the next item, and the most energy has been spent on the industrial park, making sure that we get the things done, making sure that, you know, the people are happy out there, and we continue to get new buyers for the businesses in progress. Rancho Grande Industrial Park, that will continue to work in resolving issues that remain at the industrial park, complete the text op inputs, formulate a plan to complete roads, drainage, retention ponds, and proper signs, okay? In addition to that, there's one item I didn't put on there, and that's actually a couple of contracts that we had that had reversion clauses in them that simply said that if you don't do something on that property, we get the property back. But those clauses were never acted on. So we've had to go in and talk with these people, explain to them that's what the clause was in the contract, how do we want to settle it. So that takes a lot of time, and we also have to have advice from the attorney on those types of things. McQuist project, as you see, the project's moving along great. We do have a commitment from the FPD C to pay for the boring under Highway 181. Monies are there to do that, and so in the contract, we have a limit that will pay up to $125,000, I believe it is. And so whenever they're ready for that payment, we're ready to do that for them. Rancho Grande Industrial Park, going to ramp up a mineral lease that we're currently in negotiations with, with a company that wishes to do a mineral lease on the property, which would be a great thing. Of course, we're going to focus on closing these pending sales, revise the budget properly, reflect the ongoing projects for the fiscal year 2013, 2014. Our spending has been such that we've kept our spending to a minimum. We have done that because we know that we've got things to tackle, things to resolve. So we try to keep our spending at a very, very low level to be prepared so that we're ready to move on something we can. So we felt that revising a budget is probably just best to put that energy in the new budget for the 2013, 2014 year where it may now. It's just around the corner, we'll be doing the budget planning. Recently, Andy Uvanks and myself and Matt LaRue found the ability for Megan Kerr to help us and provide accounting and bookkeeping for the group, because she has expertise in governmental type accounting, which we don't, and that's a good thing. She has that, she can guide us in areas that we need to, places that we need to record things or journal things that we may not be aware of. And so we're looking at that possibility. Of course, we could have a management service agreement where if we do decide to move the bookkeeping aspect in the city or with the city, then we would have an agreement that would, you know, revert or something like that. But I think that would be a great thing, because then your reports in the future, in terms of budget reports, will be similar to what you see now. Check cutting would come out of that office. We can have some details to work out, of course, and we don't know if that's what our board would like to do, but that's just kind of some talking that we've done and so forth. I've also put on there some of the bank balances as of May 15th. You see those there. And that concludes my report, unless there's something else you would just see at this point.
I think this is the next one. Good, and I know you all work on real hard. I've attended several of your meetings, and I can see your time and effort, John, for me.
Okay. Thank you. You're doing a good job. Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have someone here to give an update on the panel meetings only committee and venue's panel?
Mr. Byron called this afternoon, but it was pretty close to four o'clock. I said that he was going to be in or to attend the meeting tonight. He would be here. He wasn't aware that we made a deal, he's such an excellent update, and I prior committed to him. He said he would have, would be available, excuse me, at the next meeting, and we'd be happy to do it at that time. If he's ever had questions between them, then please contact him. He apologized for being here.
Okay, now let's go on to item four I, electronic document distribution to city council boards, committees, and city staff. Councilmember.
And as all of you can attest, particularly right in front of Councilman Guerrero, is the significant amount of paper that is distributed to the council. I have an entire file cabinet dedicated to the documents that have been distributed to me since being elected. When going to look for research of the documents becomes quite tedious. Also, it becomes quite expensive to get these documents to us. Not only the paper and the ink costs, the man hours to copy them and compile them. I asked the city manager a week ago, kind of short notice, but I wanted to discuss this, that I believe that there was a more cost-effective way of getting that information to the council members. I believe we have a mail server in place so that emails could be set up to councilman place one through councilman place five. I know there is, the mayor receives email at thecityofforestville.org. An iPad mini which can receive and read these documents costs three, four, $500. I have one, wouldn't need one, but could connect an email account to it. I think the cost of considering that for each council member so that these documents can be gotten to us in a more timely manner and certainly in a more cost-effective manner to the city. I think you agreed when we discussed this, city manager. Do you have any comments on it?
No, sir. I think that that is a good idea. It would be up to the council, that would be their wishes. I would say that we're comfortable with our, the cost-effectiveness of that. We can do the research if that's the direction that the entire council would want us to go, but I think our city secretary would be extremely happy if we were able to just electronically send all of it.
Would it be possible to have at the next council meeting, some idea what it would cost to do that and what those cost savings would be?
Yes, sir.
Then I would make the motion to direct the city manager to investigate the costs and advantages, disadvantages to going to all electronic distribution of documents to councilmen.
Can I ask how many of us have life vests? Do we even know what's more or less how many we have?
Well, I think, you know, ultimately, we'd have to plan on six anyway, because you never know who's going to have one at the next election. I mean, I have an iPad, that's not a big deal. Others may choose to do it on their laptops or vice versa. It was just a suggestion as to getting to that point so that we're not going through rings and rings and rings of paper.
So you're suggesting that the, that council have some type of electronic device?
And I'm suggesting at this point that we ask city staff to look into that possibility and come back to council and say, this would be the cost, and this would be the savings of doing. So then the council can make an educated, informed decision about it.
I'll second.
Good question. Mr. Miller, you're saying that you want this done electronically, like stored to an email server, the documentation that you all currently get? I don't know how big our mail server is, but one thing that you've got to take into consideration, when you do electronic documents, they're huge. There's a thing called, you can zip your files and things like that, but still, evaluation would have to be how much storage is in that mail server. I don't know how old it is, but documents are huge to store. And if you're finding a store on there to save on paper, the possibility could be another server.
And that's certainly something that the city will research in that process. Our staff agree with you.
And you work on one of those armless things?
Oh, absolutely.
Stick things.
Oh, flash drive?
There you go. Would that hold that?
Well, that would be on your device. I mean, once you pull your document, you want to store it, you would put it into that UBI's device. It could be a 17 gig figure by device, but then you have to clean it off the mail server. Once you load it, you're taking it off. That wouldn't be a big space.
Mayor, I think that we're headed in the right direction, and thanks to Andy Byrd, this is going to be involved in this project also. And who will look at every alternative that we've had to convert, do that into electronic form, whether it be USB or iPad or whatever it be? Who will bring some ideas, and then let the council direct us which one is better?
Well, I think you can ask him for a raise pretty soon.
He's already asked.
I have a motion by Councilmember Miller, second by Councilmember Legus, for city staff to research electronic document distribution to city council boards, committees, and city staff. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. And we're going to go on to item four J, resolution in council for the city manager regarding the Fortsville safety driving practices within the city limits of Forestville.
Thank you, ma'am mayor. For those of you that don't know, did not read it, last Monday at noon, resident of our county was involved in a head-on collision just outside of Forestville, and killed his wife. I knew the man not extremely well, but I knew the man and the family. The following day, I was driving down 181 in front of school during the morning, and I was passed by an oilfield vehicle doing 45 miles an hour in the school zone, and he was talking on his cell phone. I think it is our responsibility, well, I know it is our responsibility as the elected officials of this community to provide for public safety. I think that it needs to be this council's commitment to that public safety, that safe driving practices will be enforced in this city. And we do that publicly. I think we need to direct our city manager to direct our... I think we need to direct our city manager, to direct our police department with that same directive, that safe driving practices will be enforced within the city limits of the city of Forestville. Be then, doing five miles an hour over the speed limit, or talking on a cell phone or driving erratically. I think we, the city of Forestville, need to set the tone that if you drive in the city of Forestville, breaking the traffic laws, or in an unsafe manner, you will be ticketed. You know, if we drive south, everybody knows if you speak in, in the city public, you're gonna get pulled over. And there were those that remember the city of Salma, that if you drove through Salma, it used, didn't matter what you were doing, you made sure you were doing a mile under the speed limit. With the amount of traffic that we have in this city, we must set that tone. We must set that tone. And I don't have a draft resolution for the council. I know that the city manager has taken some significant actions on this, and I think he's shown you that, that email that he has already set that directive through the police chief. But I think we need to reiterate it as a council, that we want safe driving practices enforced by every available resource in the police department, from the chief to the patrol
We support the, the council's wishes. We took it from the last council meeting in regards to the text op presentation and the passion that was shown at the, at that council meeting. We did, Councilman Miller and I visited last week sometime, and went over some of the issues that were, some of the issues that I believe the whole council brought to work at that text op meeting. I just wanted to go over, we've got Lieutenant Jack Clark, the chief, was here, but he got ill and had to leave. We, as staff, are just tools for the council and the...